No.
Oh, there you go. Or does it just go back down?
It's all right.
Oh, my gosh. I would expect it with me, but...
Phone book.
It's Randy Lewis, Mayor of Bountiful. This is our Bountiful City Council meeting Tuesday, December 11th, 2018. It's our 7:00 PM regular session. We did not have a work session today.
Woohoo!
And, or should've said we did have one, and Richard would've wondered when, why he wasn't there. But we didn't have one, Richard.
It was about me.
Yep, yes, it was. So, we appreciate those who are in attendance. We don't have many, but what we have to talk about is still super important. So, let's begin by having a pledge of allegiance, and I will lead us in that. So, if everyone could please stand up and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Well, we're privileged to have a couple of folks here from the young single adult state here in Bountiful, and we're privileged to, first here, we're going to hear from President Stephen King, a councillor in that state presidency, who's going to give us a thought, and then Lexi Edgar, who will offer a word of prayer for us tonight. Please, President.
I assume this mic works. So, Christmas time is really an interesting time. It's a time when we pause, we celebrate, and hopefully, we give some charity to organizations. Perhaps interesting to that is this story that was written by Charles Dickens, as he explained Mr. Scrooge. I'd like to tell you what he wrote. He said, "Mr. Scrooge was a tight-fisted, was tight-fisted at the grindstone, a squeezing, wrenching, grasping, scraping, clutching, covetous old sinner, who felt that every idiot who goes about with Christmas on his lips should be boiled in his own pudding and burned and buried with a stake of holly through his heart." He should. Now, Scrooge had a nephew. Nephew's name was Fred. Fred, in response to Mr. Scrooge, said, "There are many things from which I have derived good, by which I have not profited, I dare say, Christmas among the rest. A good time, a kind, loving, forgiving, charitable, pleasant time, the only time I know of in the long calendar year, when men and women seek by one consent to open their shut-up hearts freely, and to think of people below them as if they really were fellow passengers to the grave, and not another race of creatures bound on other journeys. And therefore, Uncle, though it has never put a scrap of gold and silver in my pocket, I believe it has done me good, and will do me good, and I say, God bless it." So, like Mr. Scrooge and like Fred, we have an opportunity to do some things a little differently. Hopefully, at this time of year, we're thinking about others, and we're thinking about what we can do to help others. We live in a very dark world where there's contention, there's disaster, there's calamity, there's war. But, one bright glimmer of hope, in my daily work, I want to share this with you. I'll pass one out to each bench. So, there's, and if you'll just pass it down and look at this. Those are the ones, I'm sorry. You'll have to go online and look. We, this year, we have posted giving machines around the world. Some of those giving machines are ones in the Joseph Smith Memorial Building downtown. What this is, is a typical, what you would think is a vending machine, where most people, when they go to a vending machine, they get their drinks, or they get their candy snacks, or whatever the case may be. But these are vending machines where you put in your money, and you actually donate through that contribution and give that donation to some charities. So, for an example, you could, you can buy two chickens, you can buy a goat, you can buy a cow, you can buy water, you can buy polio vaccines, resuscitation kits for babies, pacifier, sewing machines. All of these things, as people put into the vending machine, these contributions, they will be given to charities, and 100% of those contributions end up going to those charities, and those charities have agreed with us that none of that money will go to administration. It'll all go to purchasing cows and goats and chickens and so forth. So, we're really excited to see this. Last year, we had one machine up, which was in the Joseph Smith Memorial Building, and that one brought in a little over half a million dollars during the Christmas season. This year, we've expanded. We have them in Salt Lake City, Gilbert, Arizona, London, England, Manila in the Philippines. See, I'm forgetting one place. Oh, and New York City, near the Lincoln Center, if you're familiar with New York City, Lincoln Center across the street is a Mormon church, and that's where we've got this one posted. So, for this year, I'd really like to encourage us to be a little bit more kind, a little bit more gentler, a little bit more charitable in our thinking and in our giving. There's a man by the name of Dan Buettner, who has done some research for National Geographic about longevity, and in his studies, he has found that people who serve one another daily actually have a longer life expectancy. That's scientifically proven. So, if we serve others, we have an opportunity to live a little longer and be a little kinder and a little gentler as we do so. To close, I'd just like to read one statement here, which is by Howard W. Hunter. "This Christmas, mend a quarrel, seek out a forgotten friend, dismiss suspicion and replace it with trust. Write a letter. Give a soft answer. Encourage youth. Manifest your loyalty in word and deed. Keep a promise. Forgo a grudge. Forgive an enemy. Apologize. Try to understand. Examine your demands on others. Think first of someone else. Be kind. Be gentle. Laugh a little more. Express your gratitude. Welcome a stranger. Gladden the heart of a child. Take pleasure in the beauty and wonder of the earth. Speak your love, and then speak it again." We wish you all a Merry Christmas. We are grateful for your service. As residents of Bountiful, thank you, may you all have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Thanks.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we bow before thee with gratitude this evening for the many blessings that we enjoy at thy hand. We're grateful for the freedoms that we have been blessed with. We're grateful for the opportunity to live in this prosperous community where we have been given so much. We're grateful for thy Son, Jesus Christ, and at this time of year, pray that we might remember him more fully and strive to be more like him. We're grateful for those who lead and serve in our community, and pray that thou will bless and guide them as they lead and guide the community. Pray that thy Spirit will be poured out upon these proceedings, and we offer this prayer with gratitude in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Lexi, and President King.
I just, do you care if I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
Can, do you know the range, things in the vending machine, the range of cost?
Uh-huh. You can buy water, clean water, for about $2, and all the way up.
So, it's something that a child could go and...
Yep.
Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you.
And to another meeting.
Okay, thank you. With that, it is also time for our public comment period. Again, we, we have a public comment for up to 10 minutes, no more than two minutes per individual, and we, we're happy to have you come forward and state your name and where you're, where you're living. And that time begins now.
My name's Mark Minnis, and I have some papers for you. I live at 349 West, 300 North. Is it possible to stop the clock while I hand these out?
Go.
I got it. Just hold on. That's a copy of the petition, the rest is related, free.
Thanks.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. You can start the timer.
Yes, sir.
Okay, two minutes. So, make it quick. So, we met a couple weeks ago, and we spoke about off-street parking and the need for additional off-street parking, especially in the older neighborhoods of our city, and you approved Chad's proposals that he came up with to solve this problem. On this first page here, I drove around the neighborhoods of our city and applied his proposals and only found that 45 residences would benefit out of the over 400 residences that are currently prohibited from installing additional off-street parking. So, that's only about 10% of the problem solved, so I think there's still more work to be done. The petition that I gave you last July, I gathered over 1,000 signatures from residents who want to be able to put in additional parking, or want other residences to be able to put in additional off-street parking to comply with the winter parking ordinance. On the middle of this page here, it kind of outlines the problem that needs to be solved still. Homes that were built over 50 years ago in Bountiful, the common practice was to install a single-wide driveway along the property line or close to the property line. Unfortunately, the land use ordinances don't allow these residences to expand their off-street parking. So, I've provided proposals in this packet that will solve those problems for the remaining 350-plus residents. The second page here, Chad asked the question, where did the 5% number come from? So, I've provided the research there. The third page, these, these two revisions to the ordinances would, along with these proposed drawings, would solve the problem for all the older neighborhoods of our city. So, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any others that have public comment? Welcome to come forward. Okay, if not, we'll close our public comment period, and thank you for participating. I'll look for an approval, approval of the minutes of our previous meeting held November It's a finance committee, and the 20th and 27th, 2018. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve those minutes.
Second.
Thank you. Any further corrections or additions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do city council reports, and we'll start down there with you, Sir Richard.
Nothing official to report. I had to go to a store and get batteries early Saturday morning this past week, and didn't know why there were so many police cars there, and come to find out, Santa was arriving by helicopter, and it was the shop with a cop event in Centerville. And so, I filmed a little bit with my phone, because I'm going to share that at some point in my life, I'm sure, or I just have a neurotic need to film everything. But during my filming, I saw Chief Ross there, and we had other officers there, too. Anyway, stopped and visited with Chief Ross for a second, and the young man who was with him, and he expressed his appreciation of that program, and how he never misses an opportunity to be there, and it's one of the highlights of his year, and I just wanted to say what a great police chief we have, and that same commitment that runs through all of our staff. So, thankful to be part of this city.
Yeah, I agree. We all, we all appreciate that comment. Thank you.
No, no report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. And to you, Kendalyn.
Nothing, thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a report. Last Saturday, the Bountiful Community Service Council met and reviewed some of the service opportunities that are occurring right now in our state. Our food pantry had the largest number of volunteers ever this year, and I thought that was quite remarkable, each of that's going up. The food pantry is also preparing Christmas food packets. So, a lot of the children will not have food Christmas Day. So, these packets will be prepared by the pantry, and then will be delivered to the different schools, so the children can have food on Christmas Day. Also, sub for Santa is taking place through the pantry and through the Bountiful Service Council. So, it's quite a wonderful organization. They do a lot of things quietly, behind the scenes, but they did, Richard did, make sure that I mention tonight, the Barjay Wranglers. This Friday, 7 o'clock, was Cross High School.
Good, perfect.
Thanks, Mayor, thanks.
I knew somebody would mention it, and if they hadn't, I would've. Thank you, we're really fortunate. And Kate?
Nothing to report, just my thanks to the various department heads that have spent time getting me up to speed in various areas the last few weeks.
It's been enlightening.
It has been interesting and enlightening, and they've been patient with my questions.
That's perfect. Good, Kate, good work. Any report on the Bountiful Youth Council?
No, unfortunately, we don't have anyone here tonight to report, but I know they're excited to deliver some blankets that they worked on for Lakeview Hospital.
Perfect, thanks, Kendalyn. We'll consider approval of weekly expenditures of over $1,000, paid November 19th, 26th, and December 3rd, 2018, and also our financial report of October 2018.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion is approved, and we will... Wow, Alan, you're right first on the, how did, did you make up the agenda to get there right on the beginning?
I did.
You did? Good job. Good job. So, you're up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I actually gave her a bad time about being last on the agenda last time.
Oh, that was it?
That was the last thing she did before she left town. A little background about this project is, back during the budget process, we did talk about the opportunity to upgrade a lot of our network infrastructure, servers, storage, and we had a, kind of a critical server crash in September. Some of you may have heard about it, but it was a, it was the Police Department Records Management System that failed. It was being replaced by E-Force. It was the fat pot server, but during this process, we were trying to get E-Force to get this old server on old equipment migrated to new equipment, and it failed. During that time, we realized that the police department's existing servers were woefully slow, but we'd already gone through this process to try to get this new equipment. So, the plan right now is purchase new servers, storage, and network equipment, which will allow us to get these up to speed in the police department basement in a secured area. Then, we'll have a chance to migrate all of our existing servers, storage, data, everything that's housed in City Hall can be gradually moved over to that location in preparation for evacuating this building permanently, well, temporarily permanently. As soon as we leave this, our existing equipment, which is just a few years old, we'll be able to take that and upgrade the police department servers and get that up to speed considerably faster. The servers that we have right now are twice the speed of the police department servers, which were put in, they're eight years old, nine years old right now, and computer life, that's pretty old. So, then, once we get ready to move back in to the renovated City Hall, the equipment that we have will make it a lot easier to gradually move it back in, and so, we'll be in really good shape. One of the nicest things is, one advantage is, as pointed out in this report, we had planned some capital improvements over the next several years. We fully anticipate that this will push back a lot of the upgrades that we had planned for the Capital Improvement Fund. So, I come to you for approval to continue on this project.
I really liked the thoroughness of your report, and it seems logical, it seems needful. So, I'd like to move that we approve this purchase of equipment from various vendors to complete the server storage network upgrade project in the total of $127,000 and $863.11.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Alan, could I just ask a question?
Yes.
I'm sure we have off-site backup.
Yes.
I didn't read that in as I went through this, so that would not be affected by what's happening?
We do have three different locations, four different locations that we have backups right now, and this process or this upgrade will allow us more flexibility that way and more capacity. Right now, we have data stored at City Hall, at the Police Department, at the Power Department, and off. We, we send media hard drives to perpetual storage up Little Cottonwood Canyon in the vaults every week, so there's a migrant, there's a constant rotation that takes place there. So, this server improvement will also allow us to take some existing storage at the Police Department, and we'll take our storage and move it in there. Their existing storage could be used to greatly enhance our disaster recovery and backup process, and we've been analyzing that very thoroughly over the last few months.
Do we store things in the cloud?
Not yet. We're looking at that. We have recently talked with a company called Coniquant that has a data center in southern Utah, near St. George. We've been talking to, and also perpetual storage, who manages the vaults up Little Cottonwood Canyon. They have a new product called Granite Cloud. We've been talking to them about the possibility of using them also to do this off-site data storage. We've recently learned that, for instance, Amazon has a, it's called AWS, they have a service where we can store a lot of data there for a very cheap amount of money. If we want it back, that's when we pay some big money to get the data back, but it's not kind of a little safeguard that says, okay, we're going to push this off to them, pretty low cost per gigabyte, but in the event of a catastrophic failure or something, we can get it back, but we'll pay dearly for it, that it might be worth it. So, we're analyzing other options, so good question.
Thanks, Alan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Alan, thank you very much. Thanks. And we'll turn some time over to Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Each year, Utah State Code requires that the council give public notice of its annual meeting schedule, and also specify the date, time, and place of the scheduled meetings. In the past, the council, well, the council can meet when it wants. In the 80s and 90s, the council met every Wednesday night. For the last 17 or 18 years, it's been the second and fourth Tuesdays. That can be changed at any time by the council's discretion, but what we have before you tonight is a recommendation to approve the public notice of the upcoming 2019 meeting schedule, which includes the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month, with the exception of December 24th. We took a big leap of faith and assumed that you wouldn't want to meet on Christmas Eve.
Big leap.
And, no, it was, you're taking a big risk, assuming that.
Good. Any, any other, any other exceptions or...
That's it.
So, I'll look for a motion to approve that schedule.
I'll make a motion to approve the city council notice schedule for meetings in 2019 and meet on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month.
Second.
With the exception of Christmas Eve.
Right.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. And, let's see. Chad?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you know, every two years, state law requires that the city review our, our moderate income housing section of our general plan, and look at, look at the numbers, look at projections for the coming next couple of years, five years or so, and so, we've conducted that study. We've prepared a report which is attached to your materials, and I want to just go over a couple of, couple of numbers from that report. The, the state code requires us to look at a number of different things, efforts that we've taken to reduce, mitigate, or eliminate, regulatory barriers to moderate income housing, things we've done to encourage preservation of existing moderate income housing, progress made in analyzing, or excuse me, made in the number of housing units that are 80% of the adjusted median income, and then down to 30%. And then, some other new things that were added last year related to number of subsidized units in the city, number that are deed restricted, and our efforts made on some of the, the funding that is available through RDA funds for funding moderate housing. So, I want to just address a few of those things. First, though, I want to talk about some numbers. So, we do track building permits, of course, we track the number of units that were constructed over the last two years. So, those units that were permitted and constructed, we had 141, that includes all units, single-family and multifamily. Of those units, we had 98 that were multifamily. Now, multifamily is generally considered to be more affordable than, than single-family housing. In our particular case, that's very true, the, the units that were built were Carrington Place, we had 60 of those units built at Carrington Place over the last two years, and some other, other smaller projects. None of those would be considered luxury housing, they're all, they're all in that kind of moderate income housing bracket. So, we do have a number of those units that we built, about 70% of the units that we built were, were that moderate income housing. In addition, in relation to regulatory barriers, as you know, you, just a couple of months ago, expanded the ability for people to have accessory dwelling units in their, in their homes. We had a restriction that said you had to be related to the people, and now, that's been lifted. We've seen, we've seen a number of those applications come in the last few months, continue to see those come in, and we think that'll be something that will, will do a good job at increasing that stock of moderate income housing. We also, I want to talk a little bit about our existing housing stock. Our, about 65% of our, the homes in Bountiful were built before 1980. A lot of those older homes, smaller homes, make up some of our affordable, or moderate income housing, and it's an important part of that, that puzzle. It's, a lot of those are starter homes for young couples, and that keeps, keeps those, preserving those, those older neighborhoods keeps that housing stock at that moderate income housing level. I do want to say that this is a big issue with the state. This will be something that'll come up with the legislature this year. There's, there's some confusion about affordable housing and housing affordability. Everything I've been talking about right now has been housing affordability. Affordable housing is a specific term that's used to talk about subsidized housing, things that the government does to, to create housing for those very low-income folks. We actually have some of that in Bountiful. This was something that's new this year that we were asked to report on, that I was really kind of intrigued by, and got some numbers from the state. We have, as listed in your report, 167 units that are subsidized by the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. We also have 17 units subsidized by the Olean Walker Housing Loan Fund. I've been talking with the Davis Housing folks this week that, that run those low-income housing programs for Davis County, and they have said that we also have eight, excuse me, 87 Section 8 housing vouchers, the flexible housing vouchers that their folks have. That's not a lot, based on the number of, that are distributed in the county, but it is more than I expected there to be, so there's quite a number of Section 8 vouchers out there in Bountiful.
Can I, can I ask you something about that?
Sure.
The Section 8 vouchers and also the, the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, are those state, are those federal? What are those?
The Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program is a federal program, as is the Section 8 program, listed by state agencies, though, so...
Okay.
Chad, I have another question for you.
Sure.
Are you aware of whether we have any housing that the teacher-next-door program or the police officer, first responder-next-door program that the Community Development Corporation of Utah runs?
I, I don't know. Yeah, I've never, I've never looked at that. I would imagine we do, based on the numbers we've seen, but I don't know. Something we could look into, not something that this report specifically requires, so didn't look into it for the purposes of this report, but we could find out.
Okay.
I would guess we do. I would be really surprised if we didn't. We have some, we have some pretty, you know, those moderate income housing standards, we have some, quite a few units that meet those, and you can see that in your report. If you look at the, at the report, as far as the existing housing stock, we have units that meet that 30% of adjusted median income. We have 1,700 units.
This is page 60.
This is page 60, excuse me, of your report, meeting the 50% category, we have 3,000 units, 80% AMI, 4,000. So, I mean, we've got, I would imagine we do. I haven't, I haven't looked at that specifically, but I will get back to you on that. Okay, so, I want to just run over a couple of things, though, because I think that one of the things that we're noticing is that there is somewhat of a, a false narrative that's being floated around, that local municipalities are not willing to work on these projects. I think you can see 70% of our housing that's been built in the last two years would fit into that moderate income housing category. So, we're definitely building these units in, in Bountiful. Part of the, part of the problem is, is just kind of defining what it is that we're looking to, to analyze. As, as we looked at this, the Department of So we're, we're definitely building these units in, in Bountiful. Part of the, part of the problem is, is just kind of defining what it is that we're looking to, to analyze. As, as we looked at this, the Department of Workforce Services has provided some really good tools to, to look at, you know, our percentage of, of affordable housing. Their numbers are a little bit different, and that's because we took our numbers for the most recent American Community, Community Survey Data, twenty seventeen. They go to twenty sixteen. So the, the numbers are a little bit different than what I just read to you, but that's the reason why. I wanted to point out, if you look at this, this table is, is an interesting table. This is a, a table that you, you type in Bountiful City and it's automatically populated by that census data. Again, the Workforce Service has put this together, and it does provide some interesting data. One thing that's good about this is it does show down here that Bountiful has made progress. All that green down there in that bottom box says we've made progress between two thousand, two thousand sixteen, two thousand eighteen. So that's good. We like to see progress. But I want to just talk a little bit about these numbers because, you know, looking at the rationale that we're looking at for this gap, which is what this is trying to, to analyze, we have to kind of look pretty hard at these numbers and see what's being, what's being put forward as, as the gap. So if you look at our two thousand eighteen numbers, we show that we had this many, five-hundred-and-eighty rental households that were in that thirty percent. Now, this says HAMFI. That's, that's just another, it's HUD's version of that adjusted median income number, so I'm going to just refer to that still as AMI, just for ease of, of speaking. So you have five-hundred-and-eighty houses, five-hundred-and-thirty-five units that would qualify for these folks not spending more than thirty percent of their income on, on housing. So we've got a little bit of, we've got some work that we could do on those units. But looking at these units, fifty percent HAMFI, AMI, we've got eleven-hundred-and-eighty renter households and seventeen-fifty that are, that are out there. We've got units that would meet that criteria. We've got seventeen, seventeen-fifty, according to this data, which shows we've got a surplus of five-seventy. Same thing up there on eighty percent, surplus of twelve-twenty. Here's the tricky part, though, is, is the Department of Workforce Services has looked at these numbers, they would still call this a gap, and that's why that shows up as red, because there's another, there's another number right there in the middle that says available rental units. So we have to look at how that's defined. What does that mean? So the, the definition, this is from the Department of Workforce Services Affordable Housing Report of twenty seventeen. It's a housing unit is affordable and available if that unit is both affordable and vacant or is currently occupied by a household at or below the defined income threshold. Therefore, a unit is unavailable if it's either occupied by a household above the defined income, defined income threshold, or it's unaffordable. So here's the problem with that particular analysis. We don't know if some of these housing units that are being occupied, that aren't available for fifty percent HAMFI, are being occupied by this group. That could be somebody that's managed to get some housing that's a little more affordable for them, and they're able to save some money because of that. Same thing all the way down that line. We could have folks in this fifty percent category that are renting some of these thirty percent affordable units. And so it's, it's a tricky, it's a tricky number to look at because the two things that don't change there, as you'll notice, is the number of renter households. Those are still there. We, we aren't, you know, we're adding population, but we're, those numbers are what they are. That's how many there were in twenty eighteen. And those units are the same. We have, actually, they're increasing. We're building more units. So again, you can see we've got this surplus, and so it doesn't quite tell the full story, that you might have folks, and we hope that folks are, are finding some affordable units that allow them to save a little money towards a house down payment, that they could, you know, get themselves into a, a different housing situation someday, or have additional funds to put into the local economy. So that, that number does trouble us a little bit. And, and this is part of this narrative that we've, we've got to look at. You know, Bountiful is doing, we have a lot of things going on to try to encourage moderate income housing in our city. I think we're ahead of the, ahead of the game on affordable accessory dwelling units and making those available to residents throughout the city. And that is, that is a really big issue as well, is trying to, to encourage those throughout the state. And I think we've made some other efforts that are, are really positive. So with that, we have put together some projections that are part of your report for the number of units we'll need. I'm going to tell you, our, our projections are based on population projections and the need for keeping a percentage of those units based on the prorated percentage of our population that we expect to see. And so you can see those numbers there in each of those categories on page sixty. And I wanted to just make a acknowledgement of the work that my assistant planner Curtis Poole did in putting these numbers together. He pulled these from the most recent US Census survey data and did some good, good data analysis there, so I want to give him a shout out today. With that, I, we are recommending that you, I guess, accept this moderate income housing report and authorize us to send this to the Department of Workforce Services and publish it on our website.
I have another question. What does it mean when it says the RDA of Bountiful City does not include a housing set aside because it was approved prior to this requirement?
Yeah, they, the recent RDAs, CDAs, that's Community Development Area, those, those economic development areas require a certain set aside of, of dollars for housing. Our particular RDA was approved a long time before that requirement came, came about, so we don't have a required set aside for affordable housing with our RDA funds.
So, so does that mean that in, in newer agreements, they have like a percentage?
Yeah. Murray, Murray has a RDA that's associated with the hospital, the new IMC down there. And I believe that number's twenty percent of that is set aside for affordable housing.
Hmm, okay. Thank you.
That, that might even be the state requirement. Is that, is that, I, it's negotiable, and I think that was what they negotiated, too.
Thank you for your work on this. It's a lot of work.
Any, any other questions? I'll look for a motion.
Kate, I'm, I'm fascinated by that program. It's actually the first time I've heard of it, so I want to, I want to look into that and I'll get back to you on that. That's, that'd be a good number to know. I would guess we do, though.
It's, it is a really great program. My husband is a teacher, and our first home was through that program. Right before the recession, when housing was impossible to afford, we were very grateful for the program. It was a way for, you know, teachers and firefighters and police officers to live, you know, in the neighborhoods that they were serving and provide a sense of community. So I thought it was a great program, and we were grateful for it as we were getting started and.
Yeah, I know that's been, that's been a discussion in areas like Park City and those kind of areas where it's extremely unaffordable for those types of service occupation. So yeah, it'd be, I'll look that up. I'm sure, I'm, I'm pretty sure we do have some housing that would qualify for that, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the two thousand eighteen biennial moderate housing income report and authorize staff to forward a copy to the Department of Workforce Services and the local association of government as required by state law.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That motion passes. Just a comment or two from, from me, from the Wasatch Front Regional Council, where we've been dealing with this issue a lot. And I, I mean, it's consistent. I think a couple of really interesting things about Utah. You know that we're adding a city that's larger than the size of Bountiful now. They're predicting for the next thirty years, every year, which in turn, and that has been happening, is that this is the first time in our history that they know of that there's more people in, in the, along the Wasatch Front than there are places to, to have them live. This is the first time ever here in this last year, in two thousand eighteen. So the, the housing thing is a, is a, is a, is a, is a big deal. But there's, there's two things that I, I think from the, from our council standpoint that we're going to get asked about, and that is, what are we doing about it? And so I hope that, that the answers that we, that we have for them is that, one, we really took, we took a, we took a stand on these accessory dwelling units. And, and the fact that we changed with the basement approvals for people in basements. Those, those two things are, I mean, those together are, make a difference. And secondly, if somebody asks, the fact that we have, we have built more units to, that have been multi-dwelling units than we have single-family units is really important. In the state of Utah, along the Wasatch Front, more than eighty percent of the units that are housing people are single-family dwellings, eighty percent. And what the goal is for the Gardner Institute is that it has to be, in the future, as far as they're concerned, a ratio of sixty, forty. And we've even reversed that in that, I mean, at least in the short term and in not a lot of numbers, but we're, we actually have more of, of these units. All of these units that are going up over there by just north of Culver's, do they get, they don't get counted until they're complete? Is that right?
That's part of this number. It's, it's.
It is part of this number.
Permits issued and, and under constructions. That's part of this number.
Okay. So, but we're, we're expecting more this year. And I just think it's really important that this is, this is an issue that Bountiful, whether it was by luck or not, has already started to do some things. And the legislature, and particularly Gary and I talked about, the fact that the new leadership in the legislature, we have, we have a, a construction owner who is in major leadership in the, in the legislature. And the, those who are building homes are, are licking their chops over these statistics that you got. They want to, they want to put, they want to put a lot of pressure on the cities to make a difference here. Anything with that, Chad, that's not out of line?
No, and that's why it's so important to have just, you know, the, the facts and the numbers straight when we look at these things. You know, we're, we're finding that there, as we've looked at the numbers along the Wasatch Front, there are a, a number of, of entitled but not built units out there that just haven't been built. So that can fill that gap to, to a great extent. We just need to make sure, and what we just talked about, if, if we're talking about a housing unit that's available, what do we mean by available? I mean, it's not a bad thing if we have someone that can afford a little more, that's getting a little bit better deal and using that money in the, in the local economy and, and saving up for a down payment. So we just, the other thing is that we need to have acknowledgement that all parties have a responsibility, local government certainly, but also the development community, state leadership. Everybody has a, a part to play, and we can't just put, put it all onto one of those entities. It's got to be a, a, you know, multifaceted approach to this.
Yeah, it's got to be clear that this is, what they're proposing is not fair. And Kendall, and if you're in the eighty percent bracket and you go buy something in that fifty percent bracket, but you're not of the fifty percent back bracket, we get dinged because you're in a house that should be for fifty percenters.
Hmm, wow.
We get dinged in this new, in this new thought process by the legislature.
So you have to be careful about that rationale. Thanks, Mayor.
Yep. Be careful about that rationale, exactly. They'll make it sound like, they, they could make it sound like that's, we're not doing the right thing, when in actuality, we are. Levin, we'll turn over to our city engineer.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight I have before you the renewal of a longstanding contract, one that's, one that the city has been engaged in for about seventeen years with Precision Concrete Cutting. If you turn to page sixty-nine and seventy in your packet, you'll see some examples of where raised portions of sidewalk have been trimmed and, and returned back to a, a very usable condition. We've enjoyed the relationship with Precision Concrete for a long time, and they do a great job. Over the last couple of years, we have dialed back the amount of money that's been budgeted for this program from a hundred thousand to eighty thousand dollars to allow that extra twenty thousand to help with our cost-sharing program with, which we use with the residents, and also to help address some of the issues that are just too large for Precision Concrete to go back and, and cut again. You know, there's an upper limit of how much you can structurally remove from the concrete before you actually have to just replace it. So tonight, I'm asking for your approval to renew their contract. It is up a little bit, six, you know, five-point-nine percent, I think is a fairly reasonable increase considering what we're faced with other conditions for, for construction right now. So their proposal includes a unit price of twenty-six ninety-five per inch foot, and that's how we measure is inch of thickness, foot of width for this item.
I have a question. I noticed that they have some patents in, in there. I'm just wondering, do you know if there's like expiration on those, like?
I'm sure there will be an expiration at some point. I do not know the date of expiration for their procedure, but it is a proprietary procedure. It's a very nice product. We've, it's been a few years ago that we had the competition come in and demonstrate what their abilities are, and they actually just take a big grinder and grind things off. It's really rough, and it's not a nice, smooth, uniform surface like Precision Concrete leaves. So this is, this is really the preferred method.
I'm just curious, because I saw the, the letter was from twenty thirteen, so I'm just wondering if they're, I think it's good that we have them come in as a sole service provider, but just to, you know, just for the sake of every now and again, reevaluating and seeing like if their patents are expiring or if, if things have changed in the market or, I don't know.
Based on their product, I'm, I'm not sure that they have any real competition.
Lloyd, what was their increase last year?
It was about five percent also, I believe.
And the year before that?
That I do not know. But I'd be happy to research for you.
So just punching up some numbers on this, I mean, hypothetically, on a four-foot wide sidewalk, if one existed that had a three-inch lift, looking at three hundred and twenty, three hundred and thirty dollars to cut one slab?
We really.
Go ahead.
Sorry. We, our procedure wouldn't allow us to cut that much. Really, the upper limit is about an inch. Anything more than an inch, it becomes cost prohibitive, and the, and the real solution is to just remove and replace.
Yeah. No, I really like the fact that you're redirecting some of the funds to the replacement program. I know that they're a, well, they're not a construction industry, but they're kind of that. Most of their costs have to be just, what?
Labor.
Wheels and fuel.
Yeah, labor.
Yeah, why don't you go back and see if they're hitting us for five and six percent every year, and maybe we deserve a little break on one of these renewals? Just for fun.
Okay.
If you don't mind. But I'm still happy to make a motion that we approve this, this year. But it'd be nice to see what their annual Christmas bonus is from us.
Can I ask a question, Lloyd?
Sure.
Are we still doing the replacement like we have on page seventy, where the homeowner pays half and they have?
We do. That's a very large program.
Is that what we're?
Yes.
But that's not included in this?
No. Separate program.
Separate program. And how, and how much is that, would you say, dollar-wise, and how, dollar-wise, and how many families could?
Participate?
Participate in this?
I couldn't give you the exact number off the top of my head for that, but it runs, we spend one person full-time all summer basically running that program with companies like JMR or MC Green. And so a significant portion of the money that's expended out of the street department budget for that goes for the, for the shared replacement program. And there are other, other places where we spend money for that, like utility repairs from the other departments, but it is, it is a substantial amount of money.
My neighbor, my neighbor participated in that, and she was thrilled. She called and got on the list early in the spring, and then they came in the summer, and I think it's a really successful program.
I did myself.
We, we typically have between thirty and fifty people who participate on that every year. You know, it's a little less when the price is a little higher, but lately, it's been as many homeowners as we could accommodate throughout the summer and still get the other repairs done for the other departments. It's very popular.
Thank you. Yeah, we had it done at our house, and that, and it saved my bacon when it came to snowblowing that year. And your snow blower gets it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion?
I have a question for Lloyd.
Sure.
So how much?
Pull, pull that over to you just a little bit, Kate.
It feels weird, because you're way over there. How, how much of the city have we covered with this process? I know that trees keep growing, so we'll keep having to do this, but in theory, once we've been around and covered everybody, we should, it should drop and drop and drop, right, as we?
And, and that's reflected in the decrease in the budget of, to eighty thousand dollars. So we're, we're basically on our second trip around town.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there are areas that, you know, they really only require being cut once. And so we, we bypass those as we move through the second time.
I'm no engineer, but I know that tree roots continue to grow and Bountiful soils continue to move. continue to move, so even though we've been through once or twice, there will still be work.
I've had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. Lloyd, again.
Thank you. Let me get to the right page. So, the next item I bring before you tonight is the preliminary approval for the Seifert subdivision. And just to get you oriented a little bit, here's the regional center up here on the map. This is the old Weineger's Grocery Store. And if you go just about due west from there, over here behind the new LDS church, you see this large parcel right here at the end of seven twenty-five west. So, this is the proposed Seifert subdivision. It's a three-lot subdivision. It includes this existing parcel on the west side of the road, just to the north of the big vacant lot. As proposed, all of the lots in the subdivision greatly exceed the minimum lot size. They, particularly the two in the, which will front onto the cul-de-sac that'll be built here in the vacant parcel, they exceed the frontage requirements for this zone. So, size and configuration really not an issue here. There are utilities in the area that already serve much of this parcel, and let's see if we can get to the South Davis Sewer Lair. So, if you see this red line running down through the, through seven twenty-five west, it bisects the parcel. It's an existing sewer line that doesn't have to be installed. South Davis Water has a culinary water line over here under the west curb that'll have to be extended through the cul-de-sac and be terminated in a fire hydrant on the south side of the cul-de-sac, but that utility is there readily available. There's overhead power that runs across the south property line, so power is easily accessed. It's really about as simple a subdivision as you can get. The only real unique thing about it is the layout of the cul-de-sac itself. And if you go to the preliminary drawings in your packet, you can see that it is a little bit smaller than what we would usually recommend for approval, but being that seven twenty-five west is a very narrow street, it's only a fifty-foot right-of-way itself, a fifty-foot radius cul-de-sac is more than adequate to serve the needs of the residents and the maintenance issues that we'd have, plowing or maintaining that. The difference between the back of the curb and the property line would be eight feet. That would accommodate any future sidewalk that could go in there. There is no sidewalk, though, in this entire area, and most of it was developed under the county. Yeah, it is, yep. So, you don't see a lot of sidewalk down in that part of town, and I wouldn't anticipate that that would really be a requirement in that area anytime soon. But the Planning Commission has reviewed this, and they have passed along a favorable recommendation for approval to the city council. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve this subdivision located at thirty-three fifty south, seven hundred and fifty, seven twenty-five west.
I'll look for a second.
I'll second. Oh.
Okay, Chris, and any further discussion?
I just have a quick question. Roger, do you have a builder? Okay. Well, tell Andrea hi.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. And again, Lloyd, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I direct your attention up to the, to the screen here. This next item is an easement release for one of our residents. Mr. John Saltsgiver is planning to build a detached accessory structure in his backyard up here in the northeast corner of his property. And in order to do that, he requires the release of some unnecessary and unused easements along his property. The areas that you can see in yellow along the north and east side are the areas where the easement is proposed to be released. Now, this is a little bit unique parcel because Mr. Saltsgiver owns a piece to the east which abuts the church's property. It's not included in his lot. It's totally a separate little parcel, and he has dedicated that separate parcel as an easement, which the power department will be utilizing to relocate some of their facilities so that he can build his garage. One of the things that we have done historically is try to maintain some continuity between easements, and so all along the perimeter of these lots in the cul-de-sac, they have a rear yard easement. And by eliminating the rear yard easement along Mr. Saltsgiver's property, that would just create kind of a dead end, and we wanted to be able to connect that back to the easements in the front yard, and that is shown by the area outlined in red. And that area has, will be dedicated to the city as kind of a replacement easement, which would allow any utilities to locate their facilities there. So, with that information, it's my recommendation that the city council authorize the release of the easement for Mr. Saltsgiver, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So moved?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. And our city attorney, Mr. Clinton Drake.
Thank you, Mayor. This doesn't require a whole lot of summary, because you've all, well, I guess, we have one council member that hasn't seen it, but this was, it may look familiar. The staff report is the same staff report with the exception of a few sentences that was submitted in September. This is regarding some lease agreements for cell towers at the Bountiful Police Department, Mueller Park, and one ninety-five South Bountiful Boulevard. On page eighty-one, you've got a copy of what has been approved and signed by the mayor and signed by Crown Castle, which is the property management company that manages these cell tower sites. With some companies, that is sufficient, and I had assumed or thought that that would be the case here, but we recently heard back from them that their legal department wanted actual amendments to the site lease agreements. So, what these are is each of these cell towers, all three have two different documents. One is the actual amendment to the lease agreements, which references back the original leases, and then memorandums that are to be filed with the county recorder's office. That's basically just to put others on notice that they have a leasehold interest in the cell tower sites. Nothing's changed. Some of the wording's slightly different, but I went back through and made sure that everything is, is the same as what was approved by the council. So, really, you're just approving what you've already approved before in a little bit different form. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Could you go over it line by line?
If you'd like me to.
All right. All right. Do I have a...
Everybody need a nap?
Move to, move to approve the revised...
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is good. Thank you.
I have a question. Is this, is this kind of thing the reason you decided to go to law school?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
I thought so.
Nice. So, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Good. We had double seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, we're out of here. Thanks. Thanks for all of you who stayed.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
This was a short, this, Alexa, this was...